You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown.
Good evening. We will call our Monday, June 8th council meeting to order. At this time, item 2.0 is the invocation. I asked that, looking around, let's see. Brother Dawkins, you look like you're ready to pray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for your many blessings. Lord, thank you for all the families represented here on this dais and all the families that may be watching or listening to our meeting. We ask your blessings on this city. Lord, as you know, it's been a tough time. It's been a challenging time these last 10, 12 days. But we know you're still in charge. We know that you will lead us through the valley of the shadow of death and we will fear no evil because you are with us. And, Lord Jesus, we ask that you forgive us of our sins and that you lead us and guide us in your way. And bless this upcoming council meeting right now, Lord. We ask and we thank you and we ask these many requests and prayers in Jesus' name.
Jesus' name. Thank you there, Reverend Dawkins. All right, council, let's do the pledge of allegiance if we could.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good prayer, Deacon. Absolutely. Item 4.0, announcements, recognitions. First, before I go to other council members, just kind of restate kind of the rules of the evening. Those who are joining us by the listen, audience of social media, we are still practicing our social distancing, which we encourage you to continue to do. Hopefully at our next meeting, we will have sneeze shields that we can get back in our regular positions so that we can utilize the lights. But because we are socially distanced, we don't have the benefit of our lights and we are not in our normal spaces. So council asks that as we go through tonight's meeting, if you would please raise your hand to be recognized since we don't have the benefit of your buttons. Recognize you. We'll try to continue to maintain our rules of operating under parliamentary procedure as well as two rounds of discussion on each item. So if we can keep that in mind. And also like to thank citizens of this great city for your resolve and your dedication to showing who we truly are in the city of Fayetteville. I commend you for the last seven days of you stood up and you responded in a very positive way to show that we are a community of order and law and unity and love. And so we had many protesters who were peaceful, expressing their First Amendment rights to express themselves. And it all went out without a hitch. And we encourage you to please continue to do so because your cause moves to the forefront when it's not distorted with those things that happened on two Saturday nights ago by those persons who had other intentions. So thank you for it. Thank you for abiding by the curfew. Many of you, according to my email, were thankful that the curfew was over. And we ask that you please continue to be safe. And so, and our hearts and prayers go out to all of those who were impacted over police violence and to the Floyd family. So continue to keep in our prayers. At this time, I'll go to council member Ingram and any other to have any other announcements. Council member Ingram?
Mayor Colvin, I have nothing.
Okay. All right. With that, all right, with that, we'll move on. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda council. We have a council member request. As you know, typically these go to our work sessions. But tonight, it's a council member request by council members Ingram Davis, Banks, McLaughlin, and Kinston, asking for consideration on an item. In order to stay consistent with what we've done previously, typically if council member requests don't go to work sessions, then we'll need you to add this item to the agenda if you so choose to do so. And Madam Attorney, my law degree tells me that we need a, it's not three-fourths. We need eight out of the 10 to approve, to add that if you so choose to do it. So council, I will make you aware of that. But right now, we're at approval of the agenda.
Mayor Colvin, I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of the agenda item titled "The Yellow Movement."
Okay. It's a motion by council member Ingram. Is there a second to approve? Second by council member Banks, McLaughlin. Discussion, council mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a little bit of, I'm not saying that I don't agree with this, but I guess my question is, we went through this about a month ago when council member Waddell had asked to bring something to a work session and it wasn't on time. And we said we weren't going to do that because it had happened to council member Hair like six months before that. And for the past two times, we have done it. And I know we did it last meeting that we were here on Thursday night to help with the downtown. So I guess, I guess my question is, I am good with it? If eight people are good with it? But is this going to be continuous? Is everything for a council member request, do we need to change?
So, the way that I understand it, typically our council member requests go to the work session, okay? And it is a part of the work session. Each council member is given a certain amount of time. When we want to add items, whether they're council member requests or some item for discussion, it's my understanding, according to the attorney, that we have to have at least eight persons, super majority, to add an item, whether it's a work session or just some other item other than the published agenda. Is that correct? So I don't necessarily want to say that we need to start submitting work session-related items to council meetings. But I think each individual item is a decision of the body whether you want to hear that tonight or not. And so I will leave that to your pleasure. It's a good point because we want to be consistent and fair to everyone. So I saw council member Waddell and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. And also thank you, Mayor Protem, for noting that. However, I do wish to indicate that my only interest is that policy is followed. And in this particular instance, them having brought an item to be added to the agenda, our policy is that eight votes out of 10, we'll get it added. And, you know, I think that that was what we did in the instance. Also, when I had an item that came forward, it had to be policy-related. We followed the policy. And so I'm, again, thank you, Mayor Protem. I do appreciate you remembering that. And I do hope that we'll continue to be consistent across the board and ask everybody to adhere to policy. But I'm prepared to vote on this item one way or the other if it should move forward.
Okay. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got the piece of paper tonight. And while I'm not totally against what the plan is, I just, I'm assuming that we haven't, this is strictly a council member item request. We haven't discussed this with Cool Spring Downtown. I would think that we would have enough, would show them enough respect before we start painting streets.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So this is why I need for y'all to get back in y'all's seats so I can have my button too. But at this juncture, this is just about adding the item to the agenda.
Not the discussion of?
Not the discussion of whether it's worthy, appropriate, that type of thing.
Okay. So council, according to the city attorney's guidance, before we get into the merits of it?
Point, okay, point of order, Mr. Mayor. Is this a motion with a second? And according to Robert Scholes' orders, then there's discussion on the motion. But are you telling me, city attorney, there is no discussion on this motion? I need to understand that.
Yes, sir.
Because I've only had about 44 years of dealing with Robert Scholes' orders. And I know that we have our own kind of version.
Yes, sir.
That seems to be different than what I was raised on.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying no discussion, is that right?
So you have, as a part of the city code, you have a rule about adding items to the agenda. And that rule speaks to, you make a determination about adding it without discussion.
Okay.
And then?
Then you could discuss it when it comes to?
When the item gets added, then you would have the substantive discussion about?
So again, if we choose to do this tonight, then we will need at least eight members to vote in favor of that. If it is added, then we'll get into the merits of all of that, all right? Okay, all right. So council, there was a motion by council member Ingram to add this item. There's a second by council member Banks, McLaughlin. Any, we've had sufficient discussion. All those in favor, a show of hands of adding this item?
So you got? I was just clarifying that the motion was whether to add the item.
I was getting there. I just took the long way home. All right. So council, those in favor of adding this item for discussion, show of hands. All right. One, two, three, four, okay. Madam Clerk, that passes. The electing unanimous. Looked good. All right. So that will be item 8.02? Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay. Is it too late to ask a question about this?
So then, Mayor?
Ma'am?
So now you need to vote to approve the agenda with it added as 8.02?
I'm tracking you.
Okay.
I got you, Madam Attorney. Councilman Hair, when we get to 8.02, we'll?
Not about this item, but about the rules.
Okay.
This is my question because we have kind of gone through this on a number of occasions. What is the purpose of us having a rule if the rule can be changed by eight votes? That's my, I just, if the rule does always, I mean, why do we just, why would we have it? Why not just not have the rule and always vote for an item when it comes before us? If we want to add an item with at least eight votes? That's just my, to Attorney McDonough.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hair. This is the council's rule that that is the way that you add items to the agenda.
However, we have the ability to change that if you so see fit. I got you. We're tracking. All right. I've got you. Are you good, sir?
Yeah, no, because I supported this item. But I just wondered about the rules since they always seem to kind of go back and forth depending on?
Well, I think just to make sure that we're not mixing up what our decision is, I think we followed the same process, which is, if it's not submitted to a work session, it comes to a meeting and it takes eight votes to approve it to be heard in the meeting. Now, the cases we've had both positive and negative results of that to where some requests were heard and some requests were not. And so I don't want us to confuse that we're not following the same process. But, you know, preferably council member requests go to work sessions so that we can ask the questions. Because really, the purpose of that, the request, the reason why you're given five minutes is to get consensus, to engage staff, to bring back all the answers to all of the questions. Because it really is unfair to ask for a decision to be made on something that we don't know. But we'll talk about that at 8.02. Madam Attorney, I'm trying to stay legal. We're good? I think Councilman Hair, you good? Councilman Wright?
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment on it and kind of a discussion. When you have the eight-man vote or the eight councilperson vote, a majority vote, it means that the subject must be important enough to at least eight councilpeople in order for it to pass. And this could be anything, you know? So you have the policy in place for these kinds of situations that we'll be able to hear, you know, hear a policy or hear a point at the last moment based upon the importance that eight of us thought it was important enough to hear. This is not graven in stone. This is kind of like a discussion based upon where we're trying to go. So based upon the council member's request, that's not saying that it has to necessarily be exactly like the request, but it opens us up for a discussion. So that's the importance of it. So if we say, no, this got to wait. But if eight people think it's important enough to talk about, then that's democracy at work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Ingram?
Mayor Colvin, you and Councilmember Wright pretty much summed up what I was going to say. Thank you.
All right. All right, council. Now we'll need a motion to approve the, well, we have approved the agenda.
No, you haven't approved it.
All right. We'll need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition. Councilmember Waddell?
I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with the addition of item 8.02, "The Yellow Movement."
Okay. It's a motion by council member Waddell. There's a second. I heard Wright, but I saw the hand of council member Kinston. So, okay. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? All right, council, all those in favor, show of hands. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda's approved. Item 6.0, consent agenda?
Mayor Colvin, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is.
Okay. It's a motion by council member Ingram to approve consent. A second by council member Davis. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, all those in favor, show of hands. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the public forum. This is a time where any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes and each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, we ask that you please reserve your comments to the public hearing, until the public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask you will come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, means you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light, that means that your time has expired. Because we will not have the benefits of you being in person, we will notify you at 30 seconds that you have 30 seconds remaining. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk? Didn't hear you, Madam Clerk. You getting your mic on? Mayor, we have three speakers this evening. Madam Clerk, if you could bring me the list or? Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I am.
Oh, you are deputy clerk. I forgot about that. You were deputized. All right. All right. So, Mr. Deputy Clerk, can you please call your first speaker?
Yes, Mayor and council, the first speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Mr. Walls, are you online, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address for us.
Rob Walls, 1436 Valencia Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers, mayor, fellow Americans, I have asked for oversight of the police department for many years relating to events where officers stood by while threats were conveyed in their presence and did nothing. While they made statements such as, "Do what you need to do. We'll just come back with body bags." While they violated constitutional rights based upon false 911 reports and then took no accountable actions, pressed no charges for those false reports. All of these events were derivatives of friends within the police department, which only highlights corruption in the police department and questionable hiring and vetting practices. The top-down approach from mayor, city manager, to police chief has only stifled decent Americans that wear a badge to do the right thing. The bottom line is if you were born and raised here and have friends in city departments, you can get away with whatever you want. A city where city management and council members, for their oversight and protection of citizens, have failed miserably. Losing evidence obscuring investigations and reports that end with statements from the police department such as "North Carolina state law says we don't have to tell you." These are things that governments are overthrown for doing. Mayor Colvin, your administration has set the standard for double standards. Lowered the ethical bar and played the Vietnam limbo with the livelihood of decent Americans. Double standards is the only takeaway at the moment. Your police department policies need to change. You are responsible for everything that happens or fails to happen in the city. The city council is the first line of defense to ensure that happens. For reference, you participated in a protest with hundreds of other Americans in the city, all of which violated the COVID-19 maximum group numbers, social distancing, and every other pandemic guideline issued by county, state, and federal agencies. And then canceled 4th of July festivities due to COVID restrictions. That's not all-American. And you wonder why the term "Vietnam" hangs around and is still relevant. As illustrated by the protests and future dialogue, citizens have to seem to burn down buildings, loot stores, and block main roads in the city in order for your administration to do the right thing. This city is full of Americans, men and women, who deserve one standard, not two or three, not standards based upon the social movement or the ethnicity or religion of the people. The people of this city deserve better. It shouldn't be to find better standards, you have to move to a better city. This city should be better. Your admin should be better. Your police department management needs to be better. All the events I outlined, I have video of. Mayor, pending any questions, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk?
Mayor and council, our next speaker is Mr. Daniel G. Brewer.
Mr. Brewer?
He actually has prepared a written statement that Deputy Clerk will read.
The other deputy clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This gentleman's name is Mr. Daniel G. Brewer. He resides at 5816 Lake Villa Drive. For too long, there has been a negative painful reminder of the past which has stood as a monument honored to those who hid their true feelings behind the mask of historic preservation. Dismantled are the concentration camps of World War II. The Berlin Wall no longer stands as an oppressive barrier. Yet the Market House still stands in the center of downtown. It should be destroyed and in its place a reflection on freedom erected that reminds yet heals and gathers people together instead of acting like a wedge as does the Market House. I further oppose the removal, I further propose the removal of the image of the Market House permanently from any signage, seal, or other device that has the name of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, attached or associated with it. I am in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk?
Our last speaker of this evening is Mr. Rashad Everett.
Mr. Everett, can you hear us?
Okay. Hello?
Yes, sir. Mr. Everett, please state your name and your address.
My name is Rashad Everett. I reside at 3819 Sarasota Drive in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Today I am discussing the Citizens Review Board and how the failures of, the many failures of? Somebody just muted me. Can you restart my time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I am here for the CRB, the Citizens Review Board, and the Internal Affairs to explain their failures. In the Collaborative Reform Initiative, there was a finding in 34, the finding 34. The Fayetteville Police Department media releases and press conference has not been consistent with the aftermath of officer-involved shooting. Well, here in recent times, we're seeing that the chief of police and also you, Mayor Colvin, is partaking in unfactual information that you're relaying to the media. We were cited in that in 2015, as Fayetteville as a city. I think it needs to stop. It needs to come to a head. Also, in the Body worn camera operating manual 3.24.5 states that actions require mandatory recording. Section 5, arrest detainments or protective fris. Section 6, wantless searches of individuals, buildings, vehicles?
Mr. Everett, you still there? What's going on with the audio, y'all? Mr. Everett, can you hear us?
Mayor, if you would like, we can try to call him and get him back if we can. Can you try to call him? And if?
Is he back on?
Hello?
Okay. We'll start your time over, sir. I don't know what's going on with the audio.
Okay. And what was the last part that you heard?
Mandatory recording of body cams, I think.
Okay. So in section B, it states that if there is a doubt in the officer's mind whether a situation should be recorded, the officer should opt to record the event. That has been an issue in Internal Affairs where on many cases that I've been dealing with lately that the officers have been cutting off their cameras. And we as taxpayers want to know why that is so. Why are we funding the body worn cameras if they're simply not going to keep them on? Or they're going to cut them on when it's feasible to them or when they're doing damage, they'll cut them off? I'd like to also state facts. Detective Kim, while waiting, a search aimed into the kitchen, and I took part in eating snacks and drinks. We'll also talk about Detective Matthews. Detective Matthews, I assisted with searching. We'll also talk about Detective Matthews. Detective Matthews, I assisted with searching mainly a SUV in the backyard of a, of nothing and found nothing of significance before the search warrant arrived. Sergeant Durham left the scene to get drinks and food from the detectives and I grabbed the grocery bag and brought it into the kitchen from Sergeant Durham and took part in eating of the same. That would constitute a Fourth Amendment and not only a Fourth Amendment violation, which is a Third Amendment violation, we clearly don't hear about with this quartering soldiers, where soldiers illegally entered their cells into people's living quarters and act as uniformed policemen. This is a problem and it's even more than a problem that Internal Affairs, that there is rumors that are going around Internal Affairs that these officers, nothing happened to them and they were not cited of any police misconduct. And that means that it's clear that uh your management of the police department is allowing your officers to break American constitutional rights and you guys are standing behind it. This is an issue and I hope that you address it very soon because if you're not, you're just gonna be having to put a budget to pay out a lot of lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Clerk, any other speakers?
No, sir. That was our final speaker.
What, ma'am?
We had a um resident that had signed up to speak for the hearing that he actually would like to speak for the forum and he is on and ready.
Instead of the hearing? Okay, alright, what's his name?
Okay, Mr. Sean McMillan.
Oh, okay. Mister McMillan, can you hear us?
You, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, can you? If you can state your name and your address for us, please?
Sean McMillan, sixty twenty-four Golden Rain Drive.
Okay, alright, sir.
Yes, so I would like to make some comments that are, that would direct the council for uh budgeting purposes for the coming year. First one I'd like to start with is uh planning for COVID nineteen as it looks at in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Right now, our detention center in Cumberland County has the uh, the highest total of COVID cases in any detention center in uh North Carolina. Uh, that is unacceptable. Uh, we, we sent notices to each and every person that's on the screen, each and every representative that's on the screen uh to pay attention to that and to, and have an aggressive mitigation plan in place. None was in place and now lives are at stake, at least thirty-three. There's no testing that's going on for anyone that is asymptomatic. There are no masks for anyone that other than staff. And uh, there's no contact tracing. So I strongly urge that you plan for what that looks like in the year ahead and take aggressive action on the part of your constituents to save lives. Just a couple of blocks from where you sit right now. Have a heart and have some compassion and, and act on the part of the people that you represent. Second thing is oversight. Um, the other speakers already hit on it, but uh we need oversight now. Right now, this is the largest social justice protest movement in world history. In world history, our leaders are strangely silent with anything other than photo ops and gestures. Right now is a time for action and solid policy reform that moves us towards change, not just in Minneapolis, but in this city as well. We've already requested, we've already demanded oversight for months and months. It's beyond time for you to act concretely on oversight. Uh, we suggest that you budget for the hire of a director of a police community review authority to start the process in place. That is somebody with the JD, the jurisprudence doctorate that can get the start, the process started and give you the standards for what a board should look like. We also recommend that you hire at least two investigators that can act on behalf of people in investigations of police misconduct. And lastly, for budgeting purposes, we ask you to look at demilitarizing the Fayetteville Police Department. Being able to look at them and see what looks like a special ops squad with uh MVGs, with semi-automatic rifles, with full kit, with the same thing that uh Councilman Davidson I would see in Afghanistan, it's unacceptable. And we have a chance, as the rest of the world is saying, we need to change our police practices and our justice system. We have a change, a chance to change that in the city. So if you spend money, it should not be on militarizing our police. It should be on resources like uh education, like health services and things that actually benefit our community. And prevent us from uh, from seeing some of the effects of mass incarceration and from uh, from uh the things that we've been plagued with in the Jim Crow South. Uh, lastly, I, I'd just like to say that uh, we need you at this moment to recognize what the citizens need and stop uh standing in silence. Stop going to uh these photo ops and give us solid concrete movements towards change on justice reform. I'm not the only one that's noticing this, but I will beat the drum until the council recognizes it and recognizes it, excuse me. Until our leadership starts acting with some aggressiveness and uh joins this movement that is, that has been global. And I appreciate your time. Uh, we will continue to speak.
Thank you, sir. Alright, uh, no more speakers. Okay. Alright, item eight point zero is the public hearing. Uh, individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement, single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record, and then address the council. When you are notified, you have thirty seconds remaining. Then your time will allot at the conclusion of those thirty seconds. This time, uh, Mr. Hewitt.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Good evening. Tonight, we have our required public hearing on the recommended budget for next year. Okay. Um, as you know, um, the budget was released to the city council on May twenty-first and it was actually formally presented to you in this room on May twenty-sixth. The document has also been available in the office of the city clerk on the city's website as well for public inspection. The proposed budget provides two hundred and thirty-three million dollars in total expenditures across all funds with one hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in the general fund expenditures. This spending plan represents a two point seven percent increase in the general fund over FY twenty's adopted budget. The tax rate to support this budget is recommended to remain at forty-nine point nine five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. On the screen in front of you, you see what comprises when we talk about all funds. It includes the general fund, environmental service fund, transit fund, stormwater fund, airport fund and on. In the general fund in particular, you can see we also have a comparison from FY twenty to the recommended budget in FY twenty-one. Again, um, across all funds are uh, from the adopted budget in FY twenty to the recommended budget in FY twenty-one. The all funds budget goes from two hundred and twenty-nine million dollars to two hundred and thirty-three million dollars. Of particular interest, I would note that in the general fund, it increases, includes an increase of four point seven million dollars for personnel as well as providing significant pay wage increases for fire police and nine one one, as well as bonuses for um all other non-public safety employees and upper ranks of public safety. The environmental services fund has an increase of one point seven million dollars. Um, and we also going to be in just a moment talking about the fee adjustment to support that as well. The transit fund has an increase of seven hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Stormwater um is actually down seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and primarily for transfers to capital projects is down. Um, and the airport fund is also down. As you'll recall, last year we transferred significant money for phase two. And the parking fund change is only sixty-three thousand dollars and we spent some time at our last budget work session talking about some of those activities. Earlier tonight, the council um spent part of your special meeting talking about the protests um that have um come all the way across the country and around the world over the last couple of weeks. But in addition to that, now this budget really had to contend with COVID nineteen and the pandemic that has kind of gripped our world as well. Um, our revenue impacts um are expected to range anywhere from eight to ten million dollars over the next two fiscal years. And we've been blessed as well that um the federal government and uh has provided almost fourteen million dollars to help us with this um pandemic over the next couple of years as well. Um, but this has added a level of complexity to the budget. And what we've had to do is we've had to try to focus on council's priorities, which you've established as part of your strategic planning retreat in February. And based on the guidance that we received there, we've had to refine our budget um to make sure that we're attacking those things which council believes are most important things first. And speaking of your um strategic plan, these are your council goal areas. They include a safe and secure community, response to city government, supporting a diverse and viable economy, an investment in today and tomorrow, a desirable place to live, work and recreate, a financially sound city providing exemplary city services and collaborative citizen and business engagement. And as you'll recall, when we presented the budget to you last month, we walked you through how this budget supports each one of those um uh six goal areas as well. So the revenue highlights, to support this, again, we're recommending that the tax rate remain at forty-nine point nine five cents per one hundred dollars of property valuation. Um, taxable property uh growth has been moderately improved. We're also anticipating that the central business tax district, uh tax district will remain at ten cents and that the Lake Valley Drive MSD would be reduced from thirty-nine point four cents to seventeen point five cents. Um, earlier today, there was a question from a council member and a constituent as to why that was. And to answer the question, that's why we're recommending that the tax rate for the Lake Valley Drive MSD go down is that this would be the last year in which the debt would be issued for those improvements along Lake Valley Drive. Other revenue highlights are that the residential solid waste fee is recommended to go, proposed to go to two hundred and twenty-five dollars per single family residential unit. This is an increase of thirty-five dollars per year or two dollars and ninety-two cents um per month in order to return the fund to self-sufficiency as it was in two thousand and nineteen. It also eliminates the use of general fund transfer to support solid waste operating cost. Additional revenue highlights, we're not proposing a change in the current stormwater fee. Uh, the current fee is six dollars per month um per equivalent residential unit or ERU as we say sometimes. And there's also no proposed uh fare increase for our transit operations either. The notice of this required public hearing on the budget was published in the February reserve on Friday, May twenty-ninth. And we will continue to receive um comments through tonight's public hearing and any written comments through midnight tomorrow, June ninth at the address listed on the screen, which is publiccomments@ci.fay.nc.us. And the council is scheduled to adopt the budget, the CIP, the TIP, the strategic plan and fee schedule, we hope on Monday, June twenty-second. Before we open it up to the public hearing, um uh Mayor and Counsel, um at the conclusion of the public hearing, um would like to come back up and talk to council about um where we go from here. Uh, you're scheduled to have another budget work session on Thursday. But based upon the work that we did last Thursday, that may or may not be needed or you'd like to schedule another time. As well as we um have um a roll-up of the parking lot issues that we discussed at the work session. The staff will be able to share with council if you'd like tonight, or if you're going to have a pub, another public um uh budget work session, we could cover it then. But at the conclusion of the public hearing, I'd like to come back up and get some guidance from council about that work session. So Mayor, now, um if you would, um opening the public hearing, we have one speaker and that is Ms. Carla Austin.
Alright, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Uh, Ms. Austin, are you there?
I am. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. How, how are you? Uh, please state your name and your address for us.
Good evening. My name is Carla Ecaso de Austin and I reside at thirty-two twenty-one Melfa Drive in Salem, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, good evening, uh Mayor, uh council members in Fayetteville. The only thing I want to talk about is kind of to simplify a little bit and maybe to get a little bit of cl- clarity. I believe that in the budget um is included um an increase in pay for Fayetteville Police Department. And I just want to urge um you guys to think that over. And my reason for that is that um I think that in order for them to get an increase in pay, there should, certain things that were already mentioned in the, in the previous hearing of public hearing. Um, things like oversight of the Fayetteville Police Department, some policy reform and definitely demilitarizing um our police department. One of the things that gets me um kind of upset about this whole thing is that people that, I, I don't know if there's other, I believe uh Councilmember Davis um is a veteran. I'm a veteran myself. I don't know if there's other members there that are veterans, but we know that um when you deploy or when you go overseas, Iraq, Afghanistan, wherever you deploy to, we may have a perpetrator in front of us that may have a bomb on them, ready to detonate to kill everybody that's around. And even so, we have to call it in on the radio. We can't shoot, even when we're in a firefight and we're being shot at, we can't shoot. We have to get permission. And so it's beyond me, it's beyond my frame of mind how um being here at home where we're not at war, you know, a police officer can shoot someone or a police officer can, after detaining someone being in handcuffs, can put their knee on their neck or on their back when the person is already restrained. And part of my military training, as I've been um with military police um in the army, I understand that the training comes, I don't know if the police department gets the same training, but I know from seeing the training with the military police, it's something that's kind of like put into your system because never did I once see when we were doing ranges that were scenario-based, never was a target or perpetrator a white person. It was always a black or brown person. So that's why we even have soldiers that are African-American or Latino, get tensed up when they see their own people, black people or Latinos or non-whites. And that adrenaline is running. So I don't know if that's the case with, you know, our Fayetteville Police Department, but I think that that needs to be looked in, looked into. Because that's why we have even African-American um cops or officers that they see a black person or a Latino person and their adrenaline just takes over. And that's why they feel it's okay to use that excessive force. So it starts with training. Because your adrenaline, when you're, when you're in that training and I could tell you because I've, I've conducted that training, I've gone through that training, your adrenaline is going even in training. So when I see that, that perpetrator in front of me that's ready to blow me and my fellow soldiers away, my adrenaline is going and I have to suppress that. Cause I have to wait to hear back from that commander giving me the order to shoot back or to try to detonate, you know, disarm that bomb. I can't just shoot. I can't just take that person down. And so that's the same thing that I think we need to look into. You know, proper training, we need to look into that oversight, those investigators, you know. The police is obviously not policing itself. They're not doing it properly. So I, I would like for you guys to think that over before you approve an increase in pay. They're not doing their jobs. Why should they get an increase in pay?
And we have thirty seconds left, okay?
And I'm done. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Manager, that can close it? Alright, with that, we'll close the public hearing and.
And um, as I mentioned, um if council could give um me and staff from some guidance um about the work session, we also have in front of the council um at each one of your desks, um this sheet.
Oh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. City Manager, um I guess I need to ask the mayor for clarification. I'm gonna be asking you some questions, Doug. Um, do we get two questions this round?
Yes, sir.
Two questions, alright. Whoo, okay.
And this is not the budget adoption? This is um, but um we will have many opportunities for that as well, but I'm happy.
Alright, uh, yes or no answer? Will the city council and mayor get the fifteen hundred dollar bonus?
No, sir.
No. Okay, I want to make sure citizens know that. But will every and senior I should have said and senior staff managers get that? Yes or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then last- Okay, thank you. And then lastly, the state lobbyist number was about eighty-four thousand on the sheet, and here it shows sixty...
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two thousand, and here it shows sixty-one-two-sixty. Did we beat them up, or...
Sixty-one-two, yes. Someone said that today, what is it, a closed mouth doesn't get fed? So you have not, because you asked not, so...
We asked for a reduction, and we got it?
We negotiated a better price.
Thank you very much.
Based upon strength of this.
All right, twenty thousand?
Angel Wright Lanier, thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for that.
All right. I didn't have a question, sir, while we were waiting on others.
And so let me roll through this real quick, if I can, to show you what we have.
Sure.
So at the, two sessions we had before, there was a question to, from council to make sure that the public safety employees all received at a minimum fifteen-hundred dollars increase. And scrubbing that, there were some employees who were a hundred dollars off, some were two hundred off, but in order to ensure that every employee in the city, except for the senior staff and council, would receive a fifteen-hundred-dollar bonus, or at least, fifteen-hundred dollars at least, some of them in pay and some of them others in bonus, that's going to be about twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. There was also an interest to add a fourth litter crew, that would be a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, enhance the education and awareness about litter. That is, we have a proposed contract with Sand Hills, Sustainable Sand Hills, for two years at thirty-five thousand. And then the state lobbyist that Councilman Dawkins just mentioned, with Kilpatrick Townsend at sixty-one thousand-two-sixty. Additional funding for sidewalks, was the interest last time, in adding an additional four-hundred thousand dollars. Staff would recommend that we look at these two projects for FY-21, Old Wilmington Road, and Trainer Drive, from Delaware to Levy Drive. One is near a school, and the other, I think, is coming off of Russell Street, going to one of the Hope Six communities as well. There was also a request from staff to implement the proposed fee for public records requests, with a maximum charge of no more than seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per request, that would have no impact on the budget. And additional appropriation for Murkison Road redevelopment was something we briefly talked about with the council, that would allow us to acquire the former viewpoint supermarket, pending negotiations, as well as to demolish the structure, as well as to demolish the former Amen Auto Building. We have approximately three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars available, and this would give us the necessary funds to do that. We would probably have to come back to council for additional budget authorization if we were successful in coming to terms with the funeral home that's also in that corridor. And I also know that there was maybe a request from other council members for issues, and if we were not going to have another budget work session, this would be an appropriate time for that, some of that guidance. But what we just talked about, the total proposed expenditure appropriation increases nine-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. The impact to available general fund, beyond the twelve percent goal, and so with all that said and done, the revised projection of fund balance available, beyond the twelve percent goal, if you take all of those things that you talked about, is an additional four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars available, beyond the twelve percent.
All right, so I did have a question. I emailed it to you and Ms. Brawls again. It was in reference to the solid waste fee. That is the only fund, the enterprise fund, we're asking for a fee increase, notwithstanding the ones you just read. Right now, we have a weekly recycling service that equates to roughly three dollars per can, per week, which is about sixty thousand households, so roughly a hundred-and-eighty thousand if, if all households have a blue container, and that's weekly. So if we went to every other week, how much will we save? Which, you know, if, if, if I had to guess, it would be about half as much, but if we went to every other week, where they picked up the blue container, which a lot of people don't fill up on a weekly basis, some do, but, you know, a lot of people do not, how much would that save? And would that, just that change, be able to mitigate the fee increase? And so I've asked that a couple of times, and then they were working on a number, and said they would get back with me, so. Do you have a number, Ms. Tracey? No? Okay.
No, I, I don't remember it quite like that. But in essence, the blue cart that we have is not large enough for twice-a-month collection. It's, it's probably not large enough. But we are also, I think, in the, I think this is the fourth, going into the fourth of five years, Brooke, do you recall what year this is in the recycling contract? Fourth of, I think, five. We don't have that, but we can definitely come back and talk about what that would be a negotiation with the contract, but yet, but where we're looking at, the increases are not on the recycling side, but you probably could do a wash on that, so we can come back and give you that.
Right, because a few years ago, when we had a consultant, what he said was that you could get a larger blue container, and only do half the trips, which costs you less each week. And so I would like to know what that...
And that is also what most of our peer cities do, they do it twice a month, but again, it's the size of the cart. And when we started the recycling program years and years ago, the council made a decision to implement the program at a particular fee, which necessitated us getting the smaller carts, and we've kind of been saddled with those small carts ever since then. In an ideal world, you would have a larger cart, and then you would be able to go to twice a month, but we don't have that question directly answered for you, but we can work on that tomorrow.
Okay. See any other hands, council members? Oh, oh, Mayor Proton, got a lot of stickies over here, I couldn't...
First and foremost, we need shields over here, so the mayor and I can, like, communicate together in my messiness. So I have two questions, and I guess this is a question to you and the council. Thursday night, did we end up saying that the, the maximum charge for the proposed fee for public request response was seven-fifty?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we end with that?
Yes, ma'am. It was a vote, I think, of the members present, it was six to three, I think it was, or five to four, I can't remember.
Okay, okay, all right. So, I'm sorry, I must have been on the other end, and...
But it is, it is open for, it would have to be adopted with the budget, so that fee schedule, if council wants to do something different, could change.
Okay, okay, so I guess my question is, if, if a request was for two weeks, it would still be seven-fifty?
Yes, ma'am, that would, the proposal is that would be the maximum that a person would be charged.
Okay, okay. And then I kind of want to go back to the environmental services, and this is my number two, and I will stop. First question is, when we, a few years back, when we have new trash can, recycle, recyclable or the green trash cans, or the brown trash cans, when we get new trash cans, it is my understanding, and I see it up and down the road, that we get the Fayetteville logo, which is this up here, is on our trash cans, is that correct? So when we bought the small recyclable trash cans...
The blue ones.
That we, the blue ones, that should have been bigger at the time that we did it, if we go to a bigger can, they will all have the Fayetteville logo on it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, okay, and if somebody has a broken cart, when it gets replaced, it has the Fayetteville logo on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, and...
Yes, ma'am.
In, in the same sense of doing environmental services, I see down here, we have four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars kind of wiggle room, is that what I'm seeing?
That would be the three percent fund balance that could be accumulated at the end of next year, so that council, if you choose, would not have to adjust the fee next year, when we get to budget time.
Okay, so if we didn't adjust the fee this year, and I, I'm kind, I'm going along with the mayor, what he's talking here, if we get the blue trash cans, and we have a little bit of left over, we might not have to do the thirty-five-dollar fee increase?
I would say no. The, in order to get larger carts, we finance those just like you do vehicles. There may be, depending on who the successful bidder is, there may be an option for them to buy your carts, the smaller ones. But many customers have, have probably already bought the enlarged blue carts, but you'd probably give those folks a credit, but to buy the number of blue carts in ninety-six-gallon rollouts, like you see the green or the brown ones, that's easily millions, a million-plus, million dollars or more. The last time we did that was how much?
I just did some rough math, we have about sixty thousand households, and I think the larger carts are between fifty and sixty dollars. So it's about three-point-six million dollars, just roughly, just quick math, to replace sixty thousand small carts with the larger carts.
Okay, so I guess, I guess the point that I'm going to say this, and then I'll be done. The, the point that I'm trying to make is, we, the first year that the small carts were put out, I think the council at that time knew that that was not the best decision to do the small carts, and they should have spent the extra thirty dollars or forty dollars, whatever it was, for the big carts, and then it would have gone through. Sometimes you just have to cut your losses, and realize it's not working, and the little cans are not working. They're, they're just not working. So maybe we have to do it every year, do, you know, do a four-year plan, that one-fourth of you get to buy it, if you'd like to buy a bigger can, we're going to give you a, you know, a discounted price for the first year, or something, but I think we need to address it, because it's not working, and it's not going to work next year, and it's not going to work the year after that. And we're not going to have three million dollars for trash cans. I mean, we all know that, so that, that was the end of my...
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Uh, Ms. Dawkins, I see you're itching.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion, if it pleases the council, to approve the budget, because I'd rather not meet again on Thursday night. That's, that's my preference, but, but I wanted to float that idea, because you do have some other council members that may want to speak, before I make that motion.
I was good, other than having that question about whether it was an opportunity to lessen the fee increase, if there was a change in, from weekly pickups to bi-weekly pickups, and the discussion we've had, just to get some ideas about that, but that's, that's my reluctance there, but I saw a few hands. Were y'all second, or did y'all have questions, Councilman Hare?
No, I just had a, a question. There was, and I'm not trying to take it from the members that brought it up, but we did have some conversations about homeless, and a, a piece of money, it was another item, that there was a discussion on, did we resolve that? Has that been resolved?
It was in the parking lot, Brad.
It was in the parking lot? Okay.
Um, there was not a specific ask for that, I would say as well, that today, we did receive a, a request that'll be coming to council for the Pathways for Prosperity Initiative, asking council to consider eighty thousand dollars. We also received from the Dogwood Festival, asking for seed money to jumpstart, since they have been without their revenue for their spring festival, to be able to do something later in the fall. Both of those requests would be funded from your fund balance reserves, at four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars if you choose, and so you could actually approve your budget, and then if you decided to do something for Dogwood, or Pathways for Prosperity, or some other group, as long as it were a one-time issue, you could, as you've always done, you could take that out of fund balance at a later time and date. As you've not had a chance to consider the P for P proposal, or thoroughly the Dogwood Festival proposal, even though that one's fairly direct, you could do that after you adopt a budget or not, if it's your choice.
All right. Counsel, Councilwoman Banks-McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know the last, I want to say the last work session we had, well, when we discussed our targeted action, I think that was the conversation we had, as it relates to homeless, but we never discussed, I don't recall discussing the budget as it relates to that. I think the last conversation was, we were going to bring back that information, did we ever receive anything from that?
Um, and I'm, I'm, give me a little bit more on that.
We had, we had a list, and we went from like what we felt that was priority, priority, and the last, yeah, and we supposed to got something back with, with that information.
I'm, I'm...
Well, it, there was, she's talking about when, when we had a follow-up to the strategic plan, and there was a parking lot of priorities for this year, it, it was not...
We didn't go into detail.
We didn't get into, it, it, I don't think it was connected to necessarily to specific budget areas.
Okay, if you can bring that. Which one are you bringing, Kelly, is it the slide that shows how much was spent? Okay. No, ma'am, we're going to pull that up, what, we, we have a slide that, I don't have with me a hard copy, that actually shows where the money for homelessness between the city and the county, how much comes into the community, and how it's currently being spent. But what we, what we have now is an opportunity, if the council wanted to do more than that, at the, when Dr. Manto was here, is that what you're talking about, it was an item that was in the parking lot, homeless services?
Correct, yes.
And so this would be the appropriate time for you, for council to tell us what you'd like to do more of, or less of, but between that time and now, we don't, we've not prepared a, a new list of ask for you. Do you?
I think it saved in the work session file from the last meeting.
Okay. We'll try to find that.
Okay, and then also, while we're waiting, our last meeting was proposed for the, the four-hundred thousand dollars to go towards the sidewalks. I wanted to know why that location, have we done a study to see other areas that can potentially benefit from sidewalks versus Russell Street and Levy Drive?
Uh, she, is on, is on, or Lee, but the one that is on Levy Drive, there's an elementary school right there, and one of the priorities, one of the priorities that council had established as part of pedestrian plan was to try to leverage, and to put sidewalks in near schools, and that is one that comes from that community, behind, in Levy Drive and Delaware Drive, to the elementary school, which is right there off of Robeson Street, and across the railroad tracks. And the other one, again, is off of Old Wilmington Road, on Russell Street, and goes from downtown to there. And they both roughly came in at around the four-hundred thousand dollars, which was available. I think it also probably, if Lee or Sheila were on and could discuss it further, is really about also having, probably, or having the right-of-way acquired already as well to make that. But Sheila, do you have anything else to add about that?
Well, I, I did have something, because I missed that meet, you know, I wasn't here when y'all discussed that, but as a former FAMPA board member, they usually have money for sidewalks connecting the schools, and so have we looked at that?
Yes, that was, Sheila, do you have anything to add on that?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, so I think that we have a prioritization list from the, you know, we have an Excel spreadsheet that sort of keeps up with sort of the projects that come on board, from citizen concerns, and council concerns, and so on and so forth. This list is also developed from the pedestrian plan that we've had, and so on and so forth, and so, either way, this particular two sites were picked, because we wanted to look at areas that didn't need additional easements, and I know that our city traffic engineer actually drove out to these sites today with the city construction manager, to determine if we can do these sites for the four-hundred thousand that we had allocated. And from that sort of initial evaluation, they were able to come back with, yes, we can do this without an additional easements, additional DOT help, it can be done quickly, with a little bit of contingency for additional, beyond the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand that was allocated, so I think we have three-hundred-and-fifty in there, and additional money for maybe a little bit of contingency for the projects. So something that we can accomplish for four-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, and the birds sound great, by the way. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to point out to the council and to the listening audience that an investment of four-hundred thousand dollars into our sidewalks gets two locations completed, and I want to remind everybody the, the magnitude of how many locations we really need to get done. I also want to say thank you, because I know during our, our last conversation about looking for alternate funding sources for our sidewalks and our, our street resurfacing, I, I felt like it... for our sidewalks and our street resurfacing, I felt like it had been shut down. But I did see very recently some emails passing, you know, between members of council, indicating that we are willing to have some conversations about different options for funding for sidewalks at a higher level. And so I want to publicly thank you all for that. And I wanna encourage the rest of the council to really get behind this movement, because as you see, when we heard four hundred thousand dollars, it sounded like a big deal. But when we see where that four hundred thousand dollars is going to get us, we see it's a very small impact in the grand scheme of what needs to be done. And so I know y'all probably feel like I'm beating this horse, resurrecting it, and beating it again, and I'm gonna do that, because this is important, not just to me, but to our citizens. We have to invest in our streets and in our sidewalks for the safety of our citizens. Not everybody has the luxury of getting around this city and buying cars like some of us do. Some of us are on those buses, and some of us are walking, and we need to make sure that we can do so safely and with ease, because we are, we are not a third world country. This is the United States of America. We are the all-American city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and we have to make an investment into our streets and our sidewalks. And so I hope that as we move forward, we will consider investing more money in those areas. City manager, I asked that you bring back this list for one specific reason, and that reason was so that we could look at this list and we could determine what could stay and what could go. Because we do have to understand, as was stated when we were talking about the potential of a bond, that we are in some tight economic times. And so as I'm looking at this list, and I know that everybody touts them, and I don't disagree. Everybody touts litter as a huge issue, and I go back and I say again, litter is the responsibility of the citizens who are throwing trash out of their windows, onto our streets and our roadways. And we have to stop them from doing that. And so I will, I said when we had our budget meeting, and I'll reiterate, I would like to see this money spent in a way to be able to enforce some penalties on people who are doing that versus us continuing to send more people out on the streets to pick up behind them. The more we enable this behavior, the worse it gets. Additionally, I have a question about this thirty-five thousand dollars. We keep saying for two years, is, does this one thirty-five thousand dollar investment cover both years? Or will that be thirty-five this year, and then another thirty-five next year? And then when we look at this hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for litter crews, are we, are we married to that right now, or are we willing to say, let's invest in some educational campaigns? Let's invest in some methods of enforcement, and let's see where that gets us before we continue to employ additional crews? Now, I'm not saying that it's not our responsibility to clean up. It is, I understand that. But to what end? And I thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you. Just imagine, if you have a couple of answers to some of those questions. Also, counsel, I thought it was just council, it runs together sometime, but brought a proposal to you, had spoken with the Salvation Army and some nonprofits, who wanted to collaborate with helping us with our trash situation. They wanted to give day labor to some of the people in our community that are in less fortunate circumstances. So don't know how we've looked at that. I know we've got a litter problem, but I agree, these are valid questions about some of it being education. I think that was what the Sustainable Sand Hills folks' role was in this. I had met with them a few times, and they said they, they had a, once you adopt this program, I think they helped with the education, because I don't think we can put enough crews on the street to pick up trash if the customers and the citizens are not working with us. So if you have answers, quick answers to those things.
It is thirty-five, thirty-five for that, and this is kind of the parking lot, as you mentioned, and prioritization. We can do this, you can fund all of these and still have, or you can whittle the list down. But was, those are two questions that you...
I only asked one question.
Which was thirty-five, thirty-five.
I only asked one question. That was thirty-five, thirty-five. Now, the second part of my question is, as we, and I know I might be jumping a little ahead, but as we look at some of these other things that might come up over the course of a year, I'm wondering if us bringing our fund balance down to less than half a million, if that will have an impact on, you know, when we have things come up, like for example, this council member request where we're asking for something where there's going to be an investment of resources, is this bringing it down like this going to limit our ability over the course of the next budget year to be able to ask for investments in that way? Because we have a very, we've brought our fund balance down to a point where we're starting to kind of come against our own standard.
And before you answer that, I need to put something in there to make sure we understand that. These are numbers above the twelve percent fund balance.
The four ninety-two, yes, sir.
So the state's got a eight percent, we set a goal of ten percent, we're carrying twelve percent, and these numbers are above the twelve, not that we got five hundred thousand in the bank, because I can see the emails tomorrow morning.
Correct, but I'd also say that the eight percent, as we always tell you, is on a different calculation than ten or the twelve. Not that it makes a big difference, but it is on a different calculation. This is something that Councilmember Hare mentioned the last time, when he referenced the hurricanes. One of the things that we're talking about tonight, that you've referenced several times, are having in sneeze shields between each one of the council members. Where's that money coming from? So we also have about nine hundred thousand dollars that the county has made available to us for COVID response and activities and issues. And we'll be bringing back to you, hopefully on the twenty-second, a new project, one that you've heard about. We were talking about renovating the entire building, the second and the first floor. But how can we make renovations to the first floor that will protect the public when they come in from COVID-related issues, but also protect the staff from COVID-related issues when we open back up City Hall? And so we're developing a project that would hopefully be able to use the bulk of the money that the federal government sent to the state, and then the state sent to the counties, and then the counties made available to us. But in all actuality, that nine hundred thousand dollars probably will not be enough for us to renovate the first floor in a way that would be conducive to long-term use of this, of the building. And so we'll probably be coming back to you with some funding strategies that the chief financial officer and others will be trying to put together for a project that could be anywhere from nine hundred thousand to upwards of three million dollars. Not all of that would come from your fund balance or something like that. Some of it might be a financing, or some of it could be additional federal funds that would come down. But that is what your fund balance is for, is to kind of provide that cushion. But at the request that you see on the screen or on the sheet of paper that was here, that is what that money is for, is for council to make decisions about more sidewalks. It's for council to make more decisions about more litter crews. One of the things that I would tell you, though, is this is the time to do that. The mayor and I had the conversation, and he referenced it, I think, our first budget work session, that he is accurate, and he's been asking for additional litter crews for some time. But I'm unable to find a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in the budget in the middle of the year, without coming back to council. So this is the time, if we wanna do that, and we can put in place certain parameters. So if our revenues come in a lot softer than what we think, and we come here in October, and Jay and Tracy tell us that the tax collections are off, or sales taxes continuing to slide, then what we would do is we would cut back on the spending to try to make sure we maintain as much of our available cash as we could. But at this level that's here, I feel fairly comfortable at the moment. Again, if things tighten up, we'll have to tighten up as well. But this is the time. So if there were issues about additional homelessness, about P for P, Dogwood, again, we can accommodate a lot of stuff in the middle of the year, but for huge service increases such as more litter crews, this really is the time to set that up and set that in motion. If you want us to do more sidewalks, this really is the time, because Lee and Sheila, and our construction management folks, they need to program that work over the next twelve months as well. And so what's in front of you, I think it's on your screen now, is the homeless activities. Is Chris here? Could you come up and kind of quickly, quickly walk them through this slide? Chris Colley.
Assistant Director of Economic and Community Development.
Hi, sir.
Evening, Mayor, council. Chris Colley, ECD. So what you've got in front of you is just a brief overview of homeless activities that come from various funding sources, whether it's state or local, and come down to our community here in Fayetteville and Cumberland County. So the first thing you see here is the funding sources. Kind of the big things there are the COC, the Continuum of Care, the Emergency Solutions Grant, the Community Development Block Grant, and then local funding. And then there's three key agencies at play there. There's NC 511, which is the designation for the COC that covers Cumberland County, the county, and then the city. So you can kind of look at the amount of money that each one of those agencies gets in, and then how much of that money they dedicate towards homeless activities in that last column. So you can see that the COC is the primary funder of homeless activities, and that's what those grants are for. That's what they're a hundred percent about. When you get to CDBG and then local funding, obviously there's a lot more discretion involved in that. But you can see that the county and the city do contribute some of that discretionary funding towards homeless activities. Then the county and the city both contribute locally to those efforts as well. You can see on the cities there that we have police officer, and actually we have one and a half police officers that are really dedicated that amount of time towards serving our homeless population. The Homeless Management Information System, which is HMIS, is tracking and data analytics for the homeless population. So we partner with the county in that. We've also funded the Hope Center to have some repairs done to that, to the tune of seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we're also supporting their operating expenses by helping pay for utilities. From CDBG, I broke that down a little bit into the seventy-four thousand, so you could all see what that's made up of. That's homeless supplies for the homeless officer, so that's where, when she encounters someone who needs some help on the street, she's able to go buy them, you know, small toiletry items, a flashlight, things like that. Funding for Salvation Army for the shelter, funding for endeavors for homeless prevention activities. They can help with some rent assistance and from other small items like that. Truvine, which was the Hope Center, and then Connections, which is rental and mortgage assistance. So with that, I'll take some questions, if you have any.
Yeah, I've got Councilmember Wright and then Waddell.
Okay, I wanted to... Thank you. Mr. City Manager, just a couple of questions. We've been talking about a lot of things that were on the parking lot, but I didn't hear much about the youth summer job program. Can you talk to us about that and what's...
Yes, that was actually suspended this year. Icon was suspended this year, yeah, due to COVID.
Okay, I thought that COVID might have some type of situation in that, but I didn't think that it would be totally disbanded because of COVID, because everything else is going on. Why, can, kind of, just like in a sentence, and I understand that, but that would kind of be putting youth at risk and the liabilities that we would have with the program based upon the COVID?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that and job placement. We are, the program is, I think, eight or ten weeks. It's not a very long work schedule.
Eight weeks, I would think.
And we're already into June well, and we won't come out of phase two until probably the first of July. So it just made it very unworkable for that.
I understand that. The next is bus shelters and benches. We talked about that earlier because of, you know, just the image that would help with our city for our residents during a time of adverse weather. Can you talk to us a little bit about where we are with the bus shelters and the benches at this point? And what is that gonna look like in the coming year?
Yes, sir. We, if we've not already, we can also have transit staff prepare, answer a question for you about where those locations would be in the upcoming budget. But as you may recall, Randy Hume, when he spoke to council about this issue several weeks, months ago, he talked about the fact that we had been putting out benches and shelters, and you had to meet certain warrants by the number of riders at each one of those stops. We had already reached that, and we were to the point where we were going to actually lower the ridership that would qualify for people to, for locations to qualify for benches and shelters. And so we think that what you'll see is, you'll see more benches and shelters at locations that previously may not have qualified because we're gonna lower it. But we can get you that information as another question in the Budget Chronicles later this week.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Mayor, and finally, yes, sir.
That was, that was, I was already too. Yeah, yeah, they go by fast.
Um, okay.
Let me see, I got, well, Councilman Davis, who haven't spoke, then I did have kind of two point five, kind of like the Governor's Phase-In Program, that we'll circle back to for a quick fifteen-second follow-up. You and Councilmember Waddell on that one. So Councilman Davis?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council. City manager, based on the city's CDBG-funded activities on the right to seventy-four thousand, do we have a present assessment for this year as to what they'll be needing? Do they send that to us, or do we automatically allocate that, especially with coming out of COVID? Have you been in communication with them? Do they need additional resources?
So a couple of things to answer that question. So one is annually, when we prepare that action plan, we ask our partners through an RFP process to tell us what projects they would like us to consider for funding. So we did that with our normal annual allocation. On top of that, we also got nine hundred thousand dollars from the CARES Act for CDBG, and so we went out to our partners for those fundings, that funding as well. So we, I think we have a pretty good assessment of what they're capable of providing and what they need to do. That need and capability doesn't necessarily match up, but we've gotten the best we could from them and what they're capable, and we funded as much as we can.
Is there a delta? Are we missing any needs? That's my second question.
Yeah, I'm tracking you.
So there's gonna be an unfunded need with social services, yeah, especially during this time period. We do need more social services in general. I would not hazard a guess at that. That's, you've got a city of two hundred thousand folks. That's a lot. I think what's important, though, is that we have fully funded what our partners requested, that they could handle and help people with.
Thank you. Let me go to Councilmember Ingram, first round for her. Then I'll come back to Councilmember Waddell and Banks-McLaughlin.
Chief Hawkins, I think this question is gonna be for you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Also, a beautiful prayer you led this evening, and the prayer of a protest. Thank you for that. As far as the Fayetteville Police homeless support, can you give some detail into how the Fayetteville Police Department does homeless support for the listening audience, please?
So I know he mentioned how you do one person and a half. Basically, we have one person dedicated to going around to different locations where we typically see campsites and support the resources that are already there with information, updating their location so we're aware, providing information of where to find the resources. The other half is an officer that's already assigned to another location, but that goes with that officer. So there's two people at times when it's, you know, more at risk to see different things, and you might encounter a larger group. So half that time is scheduled with the one and a half. So just a resource of information, education, as well as educating, providing details to the rest of the police department of where to find other resources as well.
Thank you, Chief Hawkins. And I asked that question because I wanted to make sure our listening audience knew that not only does our police protect us, but we, we work hard with ensuring the safety of our homeless community and working with them and whatever their needs are. So I just wanted to make sure that our listening audience knew that we have homeless support even within our Fayetteville Police Department. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Kinston, first round.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing, City Manager, I just wanted to verify, and looking at the homeless activity, there's a vast difference between the county and the city's amount contributing. Can you expand on that just a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. The Solutions Grant and the COC funding, if you look at what is federal funds and then what are local funds, you can see that we are funding a couple of other activities beyond the county. But primarily, if you look at it as well from the light that we actually have the Hope Center, which we was deeded to the city with restrictions for use as supporting homeless, which takes up probably ninety thousand dollars worth. And then, of course, we, as the chief just talked about, the support through the officers, one and a half officers working in the police department. And like the county, we also support half the HMIS. But even as it relates to our portion of CDBG activities in the counties, we do spend more. But we also get more CDBG funding than the county does as well.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, this is my second question. I'm gonna piggyback on... I'm gonna piggyback on a question that, uh, Councilmember Wright asked. As the new, um, bus benches are going in, are they being put in with the new, the solar lights? Or as they, um, need to be upgraded, are those being upgraded with the new lighting systems for those?
The, um, uh, shelters come with as a package, which includes the solar lighting kit. Um, uh, and if you see one that's not, doesn't look like it's illuminated, let us know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And I don't know that Randy, is Randy on the line? If you'd like, um, we actually have our department directors.
Yeah, we understand about the solar lights.
Yes, I am, and, and they are there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Good to see you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to ask council to, um, appropriate additional fifty thousand dollars to go towards, um, our homeless and poverty. Again, I know our last meeting, that was one of our priorities, that along with stormwater. So I would definitely like to see additional funding go towards that, um, especially considering, um, what are the com- connections of Cumberland. Um, I've been by there, and I saw the great work that they do. They provide services such as, uh, assistance with utility bills and so forth. And, um, I think that that's definitely, um, a necessity. I think that that's something that we need to consider.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, sir. I actually gave my question to Councilmember Kinston, so I'm good, thank you.
That house she popped up with. That was good collaboration, so no problem, no problem. Um, two point five, who else did I have on this scratched out list? Councilmember Wright, two point five means a fifteen second.
This is my second round, so, yeah. So I just wanted to encourage the council to remember the P for P initiative, doing a great work, uh, in the community or, and, uh, as collaborators with other already existing agencies dealing with homelessness and poverty mainly. And because of COVID nineteen, it really brought to light the importance of impacting, um, these areas of concern. And so I would just encourage, uh, the council, as one that, that sits on that board, to see the good work that they're doing in the community, um, to, uh, to support them again this year.
All right. Well, then we've had, uh, had thorough discussion. And council, I will just point out one thing before I go to whoever wants to make this motion, I think, uh, so...
And I can roll this up, Mayor, uh, real quickly, um, the list of items that I heard from council. Eighty thousand for P for P, fifty for homeless, in addition to the other items which are on the list.
Can I speak?
That's your two point five.
I haven't spoken on this one yet. So I guess my question is, um, Councilmember Ban- Banks, Banks McLaughlin, said that she wanted the fifty thousand dollars to go towards Connections. Is, is that, is that, is that correct?
Not, not the whole fifty thousand, but a portion to go towards, um, Connection, 'cause on here, I'm showing thirty thousand?
Uh-huh.
Thirty thousand dollars? So I would, um, I would like to add a twenty towards them, and then also...
Well, 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 council...
So my que- my question is, can we, do we just put the fifty on the parking lot?
Y- yes, so...
Set it aside.
So this is what it would look like. After you vote to say this budget looks, hopefully, okay, consensus tonight with these additions, we will bring you back the actual budget ordinance that will appropriate all of these funds. And what we would suggest is, you're asking for an additional fifty thousand dollars to support homeless activities. Um, Chris and his department and Cindy Blot's department will come back with how best to utilize that funding, the same as we did with the sidewalks. And, um, uh, the eighty thousand dollar request, which you've not seen, council, for, for P for P, um, that may be contingent upon, um, a similar request being made to the county. But we can probably get you some additional information that before you adopt a budget ordinance, you could consider, um, that. But, um, I think there was a fifty, um, that was requested. Um, Mr. Wright, I'm not sure, uh, if I understood what the amount you were talking about for, that you wanted the council to consider now for P for P.
Um, you know, this, uh, this eighty thousand, uh, was a request for a position, uh, you're more familiar with, uh, for hiring. Uh, but the, um, the ten, uh, thousand was something that, um, was utilized throughout the year for, for P for P when it's giving information out, doing different, uh, events and things of that nature. Uh, covering, uh, meetings and things like that when we are, are dealing with the community at large and already existing agencies to continue the efforts when it comes to those five pathways dealing with poverty. And so that's, that was, uh, my request.
So, so if I may, uh, a couple of things, council, that, that I wanted to highlight that was said tonight. Uh, Chris from, uh, Community Development said this is a big city, two hundred thousand people, have a lot of needs. And all we ever invest since I've been on council has been just what the federal government sends us. They sent us a block grant of one point four. We put in, well, did put some general fund dollars in this previous year for some new programs. But that is an area that, remember, uh, as that and P for P, whatever the details are, we work out. At the end of the day, this is how this impacts us. It shifts us into a tier-one status when we have concentrations of poverty. So either we partner with agencies to help us get us out of that, because at the end of the day, that determines whether Robert Van Gheens gets a, a, a look or not, or they go to a tier-three community. So spent a lot of time talking about the tier-one, didn't really wanna litigate all that tonight. Yeah, I think council, to be fair, um, rather than the manager make a decision off the cuff, to maybe, if you all agree, we tell him to set aside or allocate the money, we'll work out the details as to how it could best be used, uh, for these various topics. And then I'd like to move past this to, uh, to either, uh, adopt it or to come back, you know, and, and my, again, my only hesitation is to answer to questions. So if there are questions, like, uh, Councilmember Herr had a question about something budget-related, if we give a consensus to adopt, but I know we haven't adopted the ordinance, when can we get the answers back to those questions?
I hope we'll be, would get you the answers to that this week. Um, uh, I don't think we have many, um, left or any of that, um, are pending. Yeah, um, and, um, we can definitely wrap that up, um, we hope, this week, um, and can do a roll-up. But the only thing that's unresolved, as you said, Mayor, is just an amount for those, and then subject to council's allocation of those amounts.
All right, council, so, uh, before us, we have, um, additional requests for fifty thousand for something, some homeless-related. The ca- the staff will come back with us with details, have, uh, uh, consideration for a request for eighty thousand for pathways, and staff will come back with us for that. And what was the third one?
That was it. Um, now, the eighty is for a position. If there's an additional ten for support, P for P did not draw down any of the money we had set aside for them this year. And I think that, um, uh, they, of the two requests, they would probably, of course, want the position support beyond the... But if you make, I need you to tell me what you want us to put in the ordinance.
Well, since we didn't draw down last year, we did not use it. Uh, I think we, there's a greater need for it this year because we did not use because of COVID nineteen.
Well, how, well, how about, how about this? We, we get, as, if, if you, if, if you'd be so inclined, let us find out exactly what the true need is. If there's money left from one budget to a year, then, then, you know, I, I support the cause, but I, I think we're gonna have to give it my opportunity to get some explanation as to what they're asking, you know?
And I think we can come back with that answer.
All right, so, Council, Councilmember Herr, is this your two point five?
Sir, I haven't asked you one question. You, you, you keep trying to cut people off from getting any questions in. He's just like, wait a minute. Uh-huh, I know, so this would be my first one. Regardless of, I mean, and not to include the parking lot, the parking lot amount of money, in dollars, tell me what is our fund balance in dollars, not in percentages.
Okay. As we shared early and, um, before we made any of these adjustments, um...
Now, you, the adjustments, you're not, are you talking about the, the parking lot monies that I just heard tonight? Because I'm, I'm, I'm not asking... Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not saying the exclusion of what...
Twenty-two point five.
Right now, tonight, we, we have twenty-two point five.
That is the twelve percent plus.
Twenty-two point five, and that does not, uh, include whatever the deductions will be from the parking lot, uh, discussion yet.
I think that does include those, um, I gotta grab my book.
Take your time, sir.
We had that.
That was the number before the, before the parking lot, those three guys.
Right, that's what I was thinking, okay. So... Where do you think we're gonna be afterwards?
Um, I think that if we total up all the items on the parking lot, it came up to be about, was it nine hundred thousand dollars?
Twenty-two, twenty-one, six.
It was, um, four hundred, three hundred, um, eight, about nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So still, um, tw- twenty-two, twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right, Johnny?
Uh, yes, but now keeping, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and answer his question. That's, that's gonna be as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
And so...
Correct? So we got about thirty million right now, at least.
No, I thought we had thirty million in December.
But, uh, Tracy?
Yeah, we are also drawing down nine million to balance the budget, as you recall, nine point three five.
If you'll recall, sir, when we do our, um, our budget ordinance appropriation, the amount that you are appropriating in the subsequent year does not get reflected as available because you've committed it. You ba- basically already have a spending plan for that money.
So it's gonna be twenty-two point five to, maybe even twenty-one point five on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one, based on all these assumptions? Yes or no?
No, when you see your, when you see your financial report for June thirtieth, twenty-twenty...
I don't care about June thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
You do, because that's where you're gonna see it there. You will see that that fund balance is appropriated for a subsequent year. So it's not available. At June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, you have already made plans to spend that money. So even though it's in the bank, it's not available fund balance because you've already appropriated it.
So what's the answer to Councilmember Herr's question for June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one?
It would be, it would be the twenty-two point five million.
That's it.
If you don't appropriate anything else in all of the, all of the fund balance.
Okay, di- di- direct your, di- di- direct your voice over here, Ms. Boles. So, because Jonathan hijacked my, because I wanna make sure I'm understanding. He may understand. So with the deductions that we're speaking tonight, you're saying that, I thought you said that that would take us down to twenty-one point something million dollars.
Roughly speaking, we're at, we have, in the recommended budget, as you received it,
Yes, ma'am.
we were projecting to have twenty-two point five million dollars. The parking lot list is just under a million dollars. So you would then be down to about twenty-one point five million dollars of available fund balance.
So if we move tonight for a consensus to adopt the budget, to include what's, we've had the discussion on the deductions, we're looking at the twenty-one million?
Twenty-one point five million dollars.
Twenty-one point five million dollars still in the...
Yes, which would leave you at about five hundred thousand dollars beyond your twelve percent goal.
Okay, I got you, I got you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Johnny.
And if you are interested later, the bu- fund balance projections are on D twenty-three in your budget book.
All right. All right, so council, pleasure regarding this. I'm listening. Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm pleased as the council, I'll make a motion to approve the recommended budget by the city manager, and that we understand over the next, uh, few months, we'll have additional information available for our homeless situation and pathways of prosperity.
I second that.
I think Councilmember Wright, it beat you to the second.
Oh, he was on there whispering. I pushed my button.
All right, all right, council, so, so there's a motion by Councilman Dawkins, a second by Councilmember Wright, discussion, Councilmember Waddell?
Can I ask for some clarity on this motion? Are you asking for us to approve the budget this evening?
No, no, ma'am, if I can. What, what I need is consensus through this motion to direct me to prepare your budget ordinance, that you will consider formally on the twenty-second.
Because we still have an open hearing.
The, the ear- the hearing has been closed. Comments can still be received, uh, through tomorrow, um, through, at public comments at CI dot F A Y dot N C dot U S. But this is the consensus to wrap in all the things that you've heard.
And to prepare the ordinance.
Pre- pre- prepare the ordinance.
So this is an effort to, to ensure, this, this essentially what we just did replaced the meeting that we would've had on Thursday?
We, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other discussion? Are we clear? All right, and this is just to, uh, instruct him to prepare the ordinance that we can later, later adopt or not. Yes, ma'am.
Because this is the budget. So, um, so what, what is being asked is that you prepared the budget, including all of these things, the additional fifty thousand and an additional eighty thousand?
Yes, ma'am, and the, um...
All coming out of the fund balance?
Yes, ma'am, and the fifty and the eighty would come back at an appropriate time for council to, um, to direct where that money goes.
I, I wanna remind the council of something. I said it quietly, but I wanna say it out loud. Council, we, um, we wrote a fine letter to P W C and asked them for some additional money because we knew that our revenues were going to be down. Now, I said, uh, earlier, you know, maybe we might wanna look at paring this down a little bit because our revenues are going to be down. And so I just wanna say again, um, for the purposes of the council and the listening audience, it's my recommendation that we seriously look at this and see, just for this year, if there's anything on here that we can potentially do without, because we're adding more things, but we already know we're not getting more money. Our, our revenue, our revenue coming in is not going to be what it was, um, projected to be before the coronavirus came along. And so I just want us to be, um, I want us to be, to consider tightening our purse strings a little bit and, and making some decisions based upon the fact that we know that revenue is not going to look like, like what we initially anticipated. Thank you.
All right, so, council, I guess we will still, as the citizens have a day to input, um, send additional questions. We'll, we'll see whether, uh, we wanna move forward the ordinance, if there were, there's some modifications that need to be made prior to that, but I think we have to move it to that point, uh, so. Um, with that being said, there is a motion on the floor, um, by the, uh, Dawkins, uh, Wright motion, I think, we've had. Ma'am? Can you repeat it? It, it was to, uh, in- uh, consensus to, uh, have the city manager to draft the ordinance to include those things that we discussed tonight, an additional allocation toward homelessness, additional allocation toward, uh, the poverty pathways, uh, for prosperity, um, and that was it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, all right. So council, we've discussed, uh, at this time, those who are in favor of that motion, uh, show of hands. All right, those who oppose? All right, so, uh, motion carries nine to one. Those voting in, uh, opposition, Councilmember Waddell. All right, um, Councilmember requests, uh, additional item. I'll go to, uh, this was a request submitted by council members, uh, Ingram, Davis, McLaughlin, and Kinston, um, for the Yellow Movement. So, uh, I would ask that you all, uh, I guess either you can each take a few seconds, so y'all can designate each person to kinda explain to us what it, what, what it's all about. I'll start with Councilmember Ingram, since you're first on the list.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Uh, council, first, thank you for, um, allowing this item to be added to the agenda. Um, in the recent, um, national activity resulting in the death of Mr. George Floyd and other, um, black, black males, individuals that have been killed at the hands of bru- police brutality and white supremacy, um, other municipalities and cities have made it plain and are hearing their citizens and are standing with them and are delivering, um, specks of hope, um, something that can be visible and something that can be seen. I've shared with you a visual of what has been proposed, and I have talked with, um, downtown partners such as Cool Springs District, um, and the Arts Council, and, um, and our Parks and Rec. And, uh, Parks and Rec would love to be a sponsor in this, um, in also delivering... um, and also delivering, um, um, su- support in this. And, um, I, I think, I think in, in addition to us moving our hand on policies, um, we as a body have to take time to stand together. Um, and what are the way that looks like? And, and if, the, one of these ways is to, um, deliver some hope through our crosswalks and joining the yellow movement such as Washington, D.C. and Raleigh, North Carolina, who, um, Raleigh, um, CAM, a contemporary art museum, called the mayor, and the mayor said, you know, this is not my street. And they said, well, we'll call the governor. And the governor said, ha, go, go right ahead and do it. And so, now you have on a street in Raleigh, it says, "In Racism Now." And in Washington, D.C., what is now called Black Lives Matter Plaza is painted, um, Black Lives Matter. And so, um, each four of us came up with some ideas. Uh, we have an option A and an option B. Um, to see this happen, this won't really use any city funding. We've, um, like I said, we have sponsors and the labor will encompass volunteer, volunteers coming in and helping us get this done. So, it would be another unity project, um, and us coming together and put this out there. And I'll yield the floor to Councilmember Davis.
Oh, well, yeah. Councilman Davis.
Uh, just quick, Mr. Mayor and council, um, in light of council, in light of what Councilwoman Ingram stated, um, as she initially stated, my, um, thoughts and our agreement in our discussions, um, centered around four things. As we look at council and approach council, number one, that's Cool Springs, the businesses downtown, Arts Council, it's a collaborative effort with this click communication and agreement. Number two, that the signage, the labels, the names are open to be changed and receiving input with all council members so that it reflects the unity of the council and the city. Number three, that the paint is temporary in nature, um, it's not permanent. And number four, um, that a cost analysis, that is not cost prohibitive or, or cost, um, 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 uh, it's not expensive or it doesn't co- uh, cost the city anything to happen. So, again, those four things, quick. Downtown, Cool Springs, Grease, partnership collaboration. Two, signage based on things that bring us together and move us forward as a city. Um, two, excuse me, three, it's temporary in nature, we all understand that. Um, four, cost analysis is non, um, um, weighty to the city or citizens. So, that's my take on that.
Okay. Councilman Banks McLaughlin, you have any input on it?
Um, no, actually, I pretty much covered majority of it, but I hope that we can get the rest of the council's support.
Okay. Councilmember Kinson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I would like to say is there was a, uh, a show of unity, uh, this evening, um, in the streets of Fayetteville. This yellow movement is the same thing. It's giving the citizens somewhere that they can start looking at and rebranding and looking at rebranding. Um, it starts the conversation. The citizens have asked, you know, or some sort of citizens have asked, you know, what can be done? This is an opportunity as a council to be able to start addressing that conversation and bring the city of Fayetteville back in and have something to look at and reflect on. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, I'll add my two cent, and then we'll, we'll head to, uh, Councilman Dawkins. Uh, what I will say is that, um, uh, I think this is progressive. I think it, it speaks volumes. I think we have a precedent because we showed the cool sidewalk or crosswalks that Cool Spring has done throughout our downtown. So, we know that it's possible in communities, uh, throughout the country do painting on streets for bike lanes or, or in collaboration with Arts Council. I do like, uh, the caveat that Councilman Davis proposed, hopefully you all agree with some of his statements, that we engage some of the, uh, community partners who we've tasked with handling these areas, um, you know, whether it's Cool Springs or Arts Council, Detail, whomever. Uh, where you're proposing to put it, I guess, based on the, the drawing, would be somewhere in or around the downtown area. Is that right?
Mayor Colvin, if I may, um, I've been in, I've been downtown all day. And, um, I've done walkthroughs with, um, Bianca with Cool Springs. And the original proposal were to go down Hayes Street, Green Street, Person Street, and Gillespie. But, um, after speaking with Bob from the Arts Council, the greater suggestion came from Bianca and Bob that we go ahead and activate our crosswalks because it is already what we do within our district of the Cool Springs Arts and Entertainment District. So, it's working within the plan. And, um, Bob gave some great background data as to why it would not work on the cobblestone brick. Um, but to go ahead and continue what we do with our crosswalks already. And he also suggested, should other communities want to do this in, uh, around the city to bring hope where they live, he, he thought that would be a great idea as well.
Got you. Thank you so much for that clarification. Uh, coun- uh, Councilman Dawkins and then Jensen?
I had some questions. Um, what, who is paying for this? Is, they talk about sponsors. I mean, Parks and Rec can't pay for this because, because they're, they're a city department. So, what, who, who are we talking about is going, I mean, I doubt Cool Springs, uh, I'm always told they don't have much money. So, so who is, I mean, are we gonna get some citizens, just gonna donate some yellow paint? Is that...
So, to answer your question, that's exactly what's happening. So, we are working with our partner, s- our partners to bring in sponsors to donate materials. Um, as I said, it'll be volunteer effort. As Sunday after, uh, uh, the protest happened, we had donated plywood and volunteers. We didn't have to pay anybody to come down here and put up, put up boards. It was a volunteer effort. And, um, um, I, 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 our people are ready to, to, to come unite again and make this happen. And I, and I will say about the other municipalities that have done this, it has been a volunteer effort as well for individuals to come out and make this happen in Raleigh and Washington, D.C. and other cities.
So, um, my second question is, what's the definition of temporary?
So, uh, so, Mr. Manager, uh, because these are city streets, we need some professional input on this. So, what, what, what would be the signage to process so that we're, council members are not trying to answer these questions?
Well, um, first would be, um, identification of locations or process to come up with locations. And I think that's what I heard using Cool Springs and others. Um, this is, um, um, an eligible city, expensive to council chooses to pay for it. You have the money, it's your streets. Um, for fastest approval, it would probably be best to do it on city maintained streets versus N C D O T main streets where you would need to ask approval. Um, but I think if the process is to come back, uh, with Cool Springs or some community group with a recommendation and materials and locations, um, and look, we haven't even talked about what we would write on the, on the bricks, what would be appropriate. One of the things that, um, I think, uh, you would wanna do is you'd wanna, you would wanna have some unity around what you would put down. Because sadly, everything that you put down, now people can misinterpret one way or the other.
Right.
It's either not clear enough as it relates to the issue at hand or someone interprets it wrong. And so, I think the collaborative approach that I think I've, uh, heard from the council members, um, and that's trying to come back in a fairly quick timeframe, um, with some of the answers to those questions about location and composition. I mean, it could be everything from decals, it could be printing, it could be thermoplastic, um, uh, just any number of things. But, um, uh...
Got you.
Right now, we just don't have answers to all those questions. But I think with, um, the framework that y'all have outlined, we could come back with something fairly soon.
All right. Councilman Dawkins, that was two, right?
Yeah.
I'll wait till round two, Mr. Mayor.
Round two. Councilmember requests? All right. All right. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. Um, so, there's two things that, that I see that I would like to see. When I first looked at this graph, I looked at it and I did not realize that it was in the crosswalks. Um, if you see the one picture to the left, it's not on there. So, of course, when I'm looking at, I haven't, I'm, I'm looking at it right here. It's not on the crosswalk. So, I didn't understand that it was going on crosswalks. So, if we could kind, do you see where I'm looking at? Up at the one, I think that's, um, you come, to the left?
One nation, one people. Yeah, yeah. It just put, place it the wrong place.
I, I know, but as it was being presented, so, I, I love the idea of it being on the crosswalk, and I didn't see that. So, I was like, okay, now I'm, I'm getting it. So, I definitely can support this. But my question is, the only thing that I would ask to come back with is that Bianca, um, comes back and that we get... I, I love what is said on it. I do. I don't have a problem with it, but I think we need to bring our community involved. Um, it's not just ten people making the decision what gets put on there. I think we need to bring the city and the residents involved too. But, um, yeah, I, I, I am very interested in see what can come back.
Thank you. Councilman Dawkins, two point five?
So, I'm not understanding the motion. Is the motion that we go and we paint, uh, yellow paint on our streets tomorrow? Or are we going to, uh, wait, um, a couple of weeks or whenever, uh, Bianca Shoman or Cool Spring representative can come speak to us? I, because I, I really didn't get the temporary thing. Nobody answered that. And I really don't know who's gonna, like, pay for this, because if somebody gets run over while they're painting this, because I mean, who's liable? Well, the city's gonna be liable. So, um, I need, uh, I need, uh, I need to understand what, what we're doing.
So, the way I understand the process is Bianca has a board to answer to. So, if, you know, there's her opinion, there's her guidance, participation, there's her relationships with the businesses and the people in that area, which I heard that you all have already started to, to reach out to her on that. So, I think they'll come back with, with something and, not speaking for her, but maybe she can come explain some of these questions we have. Two is, um, I think that the same budget approach we used when we did the Hurley Plaza, I was all for that. There's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment across the street. It was for the beautification of downtown. Um, we've, we've done things like this before. I think that this enhances, uh, the community. I think it's timely. It's a, it's a conversation starter, and it's one of those cool things, just like the crosswalks to have the handprints and the other things that we've seen. So, um, I do agree that, that wording is important because the last thing we wanna do is have a, 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 a kickback of misinterpretation. So, maybe those questions, the particulars, can be answered tonight, just like any other council member requests for consensus. Is there enough head nods to say, "We like it," to hear the details? Okay? And that, that's kind of where we are. Councilmember Ingram, I think we've had three on you now. Uh, uh, we got, we gotta get consensus, gotta get consensus.
Consensus for what?
We, 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 we're, we're moving toward a consensus to ask, uh, for the details of those questions.
I can't make a comment?
You've done three rounds. All right. Miss Councilmember, Kinson?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. And again, like I said, we want to make sure that the wordings, um, are reflective of what we're trying to put out in the community.
And let's, let's ask them, you know?
And that's why there were two options.
Yeah. But, um...
So, we are asking, we are asking...
Well, we're about to take the temperature to s- to see, but that, that was the way I understood the conversation, that we don't have all the answers for a complete package. We don't know the cost and temporary and what the approach is and what it's going to say. But tonight is a consensus based on this request to see if there's enough interest by council to get answers to those questions and move forward with it, right? All right. Councilmember Wright, did you have something in that respect?
I, I just wanna, you know, chime in on, on it. We, we're not trying to deface, um, our downtown by putting, you know, yellow paint on the street. I think the message is much, is much bigger than, uh, what we're, what we're attempting to do as the yellow movement. Uh, and this is why the words are so important. And it's because of this turning point in our country. And I think it's another part of a peaceful protest that, uh, that we're saying, hey, we're, we with it. We want to see our country come together in better treatment and all of the things that we're marching for and, uh, we're fighting for. So, I think it's a great idea. And because it's temporary, and I heard the, uh, the city manager say different types of material or different types of things that you can put on the ground temporarily, um, which, which, which is important because we put it down there, we wanna be able to get it up and clean it up. But the, the thing is, what are we doing now to be a part of the greater picture? And I think this is a great idea, so.
It's good. All right. So, council, I think we, we've, uh, we've, we've hashed it, we've rehashed it. Uh, I don't necessarily say it's a protest, I say it's a, as a unification if we do it right. So, um, those who, uh, are... Consensus to move it forward, just like any other council member request, to, to ask, answer questions about cost, op, you know, execution, uh, those specific questions about the options as to whether to use this, you know, this type of paint or that type of paint or stickers or some of those detailed questions that will take staff time to research, council member requests are used to engage staff to come back with that. Mr. Manager, realistically, uh, now that you've got your budget almost, um, to a point, uh, how, how long would it take for, uh, you to work with council and, and those organizations to answer those questions?
Well, I, um...
This needs to probably happen, you know, while this is still...
It has to. It has to be by Friday. So, uh, my goal is that, um, uh, we'll be able to come back to you guys with the locations. I think that's what you've identified. We have a number of filters we'll run it through. You've got Cool Springs, you've got, uh, Human Relations Commission, you've got the council, you've got any number of groups that you, and the, the good thing about this is while you need to be very careful that you, um, kind of vet the names, you also don't wanna take so long that you have, uh, analysis paralysis and that you don't do anything. Because we'll be, um, four locations, ten different groups. It can be, um, so I think that if with council's consensus, we can come back to you, um, uh, with the support of the groups that y'all have mentioned and named, hopefully with a report by Friday.
Okay. All right. Council, uh, is there consensus to, uh, ask the manager to move this and bring this information back? Show of hands? All right? No? All right. Hands again? All right. Those, those oppose? All right. So, uh, motion passes nine to one. Those voting in oppositions? Uh, there's a request...
Councilmember Dawkins, I made the motion. I, I, I asked of, I asked of, I...
Well, well, she didn't, didn't have to, doesn't have to vote for her motion. I've seen that happen before. But she, she didn't make the motion, she just made the request. She just made the council member request, so. And we, yeah, she didn't make the motion. All right. So, council, can we have a motion to adjourn? All right.